Good evening. Nope. Are we ready now? Randy, are we ready? Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, November 10th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Witten, will you conduct roll?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We want to particularly thank our veterans and our members of the Armed Forces. For without their service and dedication, we wouldn't be able to meet like we are this evening. I ask you to give the supervisors the wisdom and the courage to make the best decisions for the residents of Rockbridge County. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the fact that the United States of America is a good republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no entity in its control.
We will now hold citizen comments at the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment to join by telephone. You may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Does anyone else, anyone have any changes to the agenda? If not, we will move on to citizen comments. Comments pertaining to a public hearing should be held until such time the public hearing is heard. When your name is called, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There's a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up?
There are two people signed up. Steve Hart.
Good evening, Mr. Hart.
Good evening. Steve Hart, Cars Creek. I know that more debt service for the next project at school is on the board tonight, and I figured I'd just come in and tell you what I thought about it for what it's worth for the next two months. All the reasons this is a bad idea are on this sheet. Eighty-seven million dollars is what we currently owe. Hundred and eleven million dollars is what we would owe if we did this. Eight point eight million dollars is the amount of wealth that we will transfer from the people of Rockbridge County to whoever buys the bonds if we execute this. Four million dollars is the amount that we have to use from our reserve to do this because we currently don't have the money to do it. And normally what we do is we pay down some debt before we take on more debt, but that's not what this says. This says we're going to take four million dollars, put it in the debt account, and then do that. That way, where's my tab? There it is. Um, that's the equivalent of doing an eighty, twenty mortgage, taking out second mortgage to make you down payment. Um, I know there was some stuff in there about rev- oh, we're back here. This eighty-seven million dollars that we already owe, it's on a bunch of buildings that we also have to take care of. Now, we just built a nice new building up to CTE. I've looked through the budget. If it's there, please tell me where it is because I couldn't find it. There's no accumulating fund, so we're saving money for the roof, the HVAC replacement, the kitchen replacement, and all the upgrades that are going to be necessary to keep that thing current. I haven't found an accumulating fund for the roofs on all of our other structures along with the HVAC and all of the other maintenance things that are point-in-time expenses. We bought buses out of the reserve, which means I don't think we have a bus accumulating fund. That's a predictable expense, and it should be managed every single year. And I know it said we're going to try and do this with some other of the entities. It was in the paper that Lexington had to change their budget this year because tax revenues weren't what was expected. Buena Vista is looking at thirty or forty million dollars or something like that for school systems. All of us are actually strapped. I read the budget. Every dollar that we currently collect in taxes is allocated for something. So I don't know where we get more money to do things when all of our money is already allocated. This was a big thing in my campaign. It was something I talked to everybody about, and it was something that folks spoke really loudly about, is that we don't need more debt. The other thing that was in the paper this week, flood nineteen eighty-five, long before I got here. derecho, I was here for that. Snowstorms, pandemics, all of these things. All of these things make our tax revenues go down. If we get more debt, when tax revenues go down, the only thing we can do is reach out that property tax and crank it up. And I don't want us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Davis.
Good evening. My name is Heather Davis, and I live in the Walker's Creek District. I'd like to address the proposed joint recreation project and the funding request that's being brought to this board. I'm concerned about our debt.
Could you pull that towards you so they can hear you back there?
I'm concerned about the tax burden that we're leaving for our children and grandchildren. I'm not going to touch on the issues that Mr. Hart addressed. I'll try to limit. I don't have a fancy economics degree. By no means am I a legal expert, but what I do have is a measure of common sense, something that seems to be in short supply across our nation these days. I was educated by some of the finest teachers that Rockbridge County had to offer, teachers who taught me how to be a critical thinker, how to do my own research, and how to make sound decisions. Public speaking is far out of my comfort zone, but I feel I would be doing a disservice to my sons and my granddaughter for not voicing my concerns. I have two adult children and two children who are still in high school, both involved in sports. So I do have a little knowledge of what we're lacking in our school. Some of my concerns that I have with this project are the physical security plan. I've spent all day looking over everything that's posted in minutes, anything about the project from both the website of the Board of Supervisors and the school board. The only mention I see of this in those documents is a mention on page ten of the discussion, discussion materials that says the facility would be somewhat physically divided. Even if the building is physically divided, we are still proposing to take students across a highway to go to this building. How are we keeping them from being sitting ducks? Nobody wants to think that their community would be brave for this type of thing that goes on in the news, but neither did those areas before they happened either. So what is the point of having our schools locked up if we're going to march our children across a highway unprotected? What keeps somebody from hurting them before they even go into the building? Also, as a mother, as my children have gone through the system, I've noticed a decline in the number of children who are participating in sports, not just at our school but across the state. So we're proposing to put millions more into facilities that are we going to have a future use? Parking. If you've ever attended an event at the high school, you know that parking is an issue. I see that there should be accommodations for a hundred spaces there, but if we're having a mixed use, how does that not become a problem to some degree? Traffic. If you've ever dropped a child off or picked a child up or tried to get out of a sporting event, you'll know what a nightmare traffic can be there. And we have a sheriff's department on the same highway. At Friday night's football game, there were two cars who went out for calls at a high rate of speed, which they have to understand, but we're on a highway with poor lighting and a lot of spectators and pedestrians. To me, that's just a tragedy waiting to happen. If we grow out of this high school and the county has no land, that seems to be a lot of the issue. Where do we add on to this high school? Where is our future growth? Are we looking at a future project that we have to start all over again?
Ms. Davis, I'll just remind you, if you wrap it up since you're tired right now.
I guess for me, wisdom is using knowledge, experience, and common sense to make sound decisions. I'm not saying we don't need to address this issue, but what I'm saying is, are we wise to jump into rushing this and funding this project before all of the concerns are addressed? I've seen a lot of people have these same comments. I've seen it addressed in meetings, but I don't see answers for these questions. And I would just ask that you would be wise in considering those issues prior to approval. I was in the third graduating class of this current high schools, and I still remember the hoopla surrounding this consolidation. And the big issue there is that the citizens felt like it should be up for referendum, and I would ask you to consider putting this up for referendum.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else?
Yes. Trip Alme.
Hi, I'm Trip Alme, Cars Creek. So I, when I saw this recreation center, the community center being proposed, a news article regarding that, it was the first I'd heard of it. Now, I can't dunk a basketball even with the ladder, so maybe I'm out of the loop there, but the, the lack of, of public knowledge of this until this year, it was published in the newspaper that a proposed rec center was there. There are a lot of other residents that were unaware of this also. And so I started thinking about this, and is this recreation center a want or is it a need? And where's the proof that folks actually want, wanted or think it's a need? I'd started doing research trying to find, where did this come from? What, how did this proposal pop up? And I, the only thing I can find is that Superintendent Thompson had mentioned in a, it was in a Rockbridge report, that for ten-plus years, we've needed this and that we known we've needed this community center. Other than Superintendent Thompson, I can't find anybody that has been proposing this. If it's a need, what problem does it solve? If there's a defined problem, are there other potential solutions to the problem? Can renovations to existing facilities accomplish the same goals? Has that been explored? I understand that the total interest paid over the life alone will be eight point eight million dollars. That means we get three or four basketball courts and elevated track, maybe a weight room for just a mere twenty-three million dollars. I also understand, understand there's a proposal that the four million dollars is Mr. Hart, Dr. Hart mentioned when he was speaking, that it will be pulled from the reserve fund to cover the debt service over the first five years. Mr. Suter in March of this year stated that drawing from the reserves to balance the budget is an unsustainable practice. So what makes depleting the reserves for this project any different? What happens if your revenue projections are wrong? This loan risks long-term debt for a project that might not even get heavy use, especially if it's not tailored to what our accounting residents actually want? As Ms. Davis said, perhaps a community referendum is needed. Why not explore alternative funding for grants or private investment, even a hybrid? How about a phased development plan? And let's not forget the eighty-seven million dollars in current debt that our county has. What's another twenty-three million dollars? Just going to kick it down the road to our children and our grandchildren.
Thank you very much.
Tim Goodbar.
Yeah.
Tim Goodbar, Cars Creek District. Madam Chairman, Board Members, appreciate the opportunity to come in here and speak tonight. I'd just like to know what, what's going on? What do we got on our mind here? We talking fourteen point four million dollars for a rec center and another million we're looking for, they're going to be asking for, for artificial turf for the high school, which half of the NFL is going away from the artificial turf and going back to natural gas because of the injuries. I'm not against sports, not at all. Before we spend this kind of money, we need to have a suitable place to put it. We ought to have the cash on hand to, to, to build this thing. As Mr. Hart stated, we're already eighty-seven million dollars in debt, and then we're going to put fourteen to fifteen more million on this thing, plus eight million dollars worth of interest on this thing. What about for two percent, for ten to fifteen percent of the people to use, what about the rest of us that's going to have to help put this bill? What, what, what are we going to think about this? I don't like. We've already spent twenty thousand dollars on a study for an airport for probably ten to fifteen percent of the people this county to use it. Some farmers going to lose if it's approved. Some farmers going to lose his farm that he's worked these, but too soft to get all these years. What about the people who is on a fixed income? And they've lived here their entire life, and they've worked for what little bit they got. Taxes keep going up, up. How are they going to afford to keep it? Thought I was being a little better prepared for this. I've rehearsed this all day, and we're forgetting something. But anyhow, those people have worked, and, and we're going to be the ones, the majority of the people's going to be paying for this, and we can, and we ain't even going to be used. I'm ten years past retirement age. I still get up every morning and get a chainsaw in my hand and cut timber all day long because I cannot live off my retirement. I can't pay the taxes on my farm that I worked all my life to help pay for, and then my mother left it to me. It, we struggle, 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 struggle to keep the taxes paid on it. If, if I was not able and have, and lucky, the Lord has blessed me with them good health, and I'm still able to work. What about the folks out here that's not able to work and relying on that? I am going to urge y'all to really give this a lot of thought, and I would like for you to put it out on a referendum, and thus if the majority of the voters of this county goes forward or proves it, I will live with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodbar.
Okay, so that's all that has signed up.
Anyone online?
Madam Chair, this is Spencer Suter. Apologize, I'm working from home this evening. I'm under the weather as, as is Mr. Harrison. So I'm going to try to run this from, from here. No one has their hand raised.
Is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak to this issue or any issue? Feel free. Not? Then we will move on. Thank you all. We'll move to approval of the October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five work session in regular meeting minutes. Any question or comments on the minutes?
I can motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. County financial report and appropriation resolution. Mr. Suter, you fill up to that?
Uh, yes. And Mr. Harrison is worse off than me, so I told him I would try to, try to do this for him. And I apologize, I don't have my video on. My bandwidth isn't such that it's going to, that's going to assist there. There is no school division resolution action for this evening. The county's resolution, the, the total bills for this period were four, four hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars and six cents. Apologize, all the bills were on the, on your board docs package. We missed putting the actual resolution on there, so you should each have a hard copy in front of you, and it is online now, but that's the total. And of that, there's sixteen thousand dollars for courthouse improvements. Those are benches for the second and third floor as part of the, as an addition to the flood repairs, correcting an issue that existed for years with portable benches destroying the floor. And so the request is to, to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Suter.
Welcome.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So much.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We'll move on to the consideration of contract award for fire and rescue comprehensive study.
Chair members of the board, thank you all. So what we have in front of you tonight was the approved comprehensive study and strategic plan requests for the, for FY26 budget year. We have gone through the process of an RFP with the help of Ms. Milner and, and the finance department, and the committee was made up of, well, we received fourteen proposals for, for this study overwhelmingly, more than we anticipated. Some were, were thrown out for, for being non-responsive due to one thing or another, not, not really following the bid, but in general, good response. President of the Volunteer Fire Rescue Association, Steve Reese, Vice President, Patrick Stumpf, Fleet Services Director, Steve Kingry, Deputy Chief Zalman, who is with us tonight, and myself, sat on the five-person panel to grade the proposals. So we came up with the top two proposals. Ms. Milner, myself, and Bailey Trent, our admin assistant interviewed both, both of the top two that we come up with as the contract and RFP stated. And then finally, the AP, AP Triton is the firm for this study that, that we recommend. Mr. Dryden has reviewed the contract. AP Triton has agreed to the terms set forth of the contract, so we're just asking for approval. And just, just to recollect a little bit, the study is to assess our current operations from fire EMS for the entire county. This is career, volunteer, emergency management, anything that involves emergency response that we do. The company will come in with a team of folks, will set up meetings with, with our volunteer agencies and strategically locations throughout the county so that everyone's voice can be heard. They can come and meet with, more than likely be the Public Safety Committee at, at one of our meetings. And then there will be staff survey for our staff, community engagement, some sort of survey will go out as well. And then we will provide them with up to five years of, of our data that we have, anything from calls that we've responded to, the areas throughout the county that we've responded to, CAD reports. They, they just kind of look at everything, everything that we have. So, and then our goal is to create a master plan with a look at five years of where we should be and ten years down the road of how things, recommendations for you all to, to make decisions moving forward. So with that, they are under budget. They come in under, we originally budgeted eighty thousand dollars. The budget amount was seventy, seventy-nine, eight thirty-two, and it's going to take approximately six months to complete. And the recommendation is for Mr. Suter to sign the contract with AP Triton.
So is, are there any questions? There a motion?
I'll move to approve. You can authorize Spencer Suter to execute.
And authorize Mr. Suter to sign the contract.
Okay. Appreciate that. There a second? Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. Consideration of school requests for rec center and field funding.
Yes, ma'am. So in a joint meeting with the school board last November, the proposed school CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, was discussed, as we'll do again on Thursday of this week. The CIP included athletic facility improvements at, at the high school. And in the first quarter of, of calendar year last year, a committee was formed to explore these upgrades, and the school division hired Spectrum Design to develop conceptual model of an athletic center at the high school. In a parallel track, in a joint meeting with Lexington and Buena Vista City Councils last January, January thirtieth, the board received a presentation from the Rockbridge Recreation Association, which outlined as part of the thing, a part of the, the presentation, need for additional gym space in the region. So given this, Row Row was included in the planning process via input from Executive Director Chad Coffey. The committee and, and Spectrum's work resulted in a facility design to, that would be designed to meet the needs of both the high school and enhance Row Row's capacity to provide both youth and adult programming and also to provide Row Row with office space. And that study is included in your agenda package. Spectrum's estimated cost of facility was twelve million, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-eight. I do want to point out that the facility would effectively remove four previously planned, planned projects in the school division's FY27 CIP totaling nine million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. And that was junior light paving, concessions, and restrooms, fieldhouse, locker rooms, and a weight room, and the auxiliary gym. So then fast forward to October thirtieth of this year, in a joint meeting with the, the board and Lexington and Buena Vista City Councils, I presented the building design plan and joint use concept as part of an overall regional recreation discussion. The school division also recently asked for consideration to install turf on the main, the main playing field, citing the poor ongoing condition of the current natural grass service due to the number of games played on the field, and the cost of that project was estimated to be one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So last Monday, I received the, the letter, formal letter of request from Dr. Thompson to fund both projects, and the total request for the two projects is fourteen million, nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I've also attached the presentation that the board received from our financial advisor, Davenport and Company, at its second September meeting. The outline, or the report outlines two scenarios for funding using a combination of cash and borrowing. In their review, Davenport recommended pursuing option two, borrowing fourteen point five million and using four hundred thousand, or four hundred, I'm sorry, four million in reserves to create a debt service fund for future payments. And I'd also like to ensure that the board understands that since, if, if approved, to move ahead, an athletic center project would displace the three tennis courts at the high school, and as such, an estimated one point five million would need to be added to the FY27 Capital Improvement Plan in a parallel track as we seek other sites or other options. And please also note that depending on, on financing options, the turf field and the tennis courts could potentially be swapped should the board approve the projects. At this point, that's a, that's an overview. I'd, I'd ask Dr. Thompson if he has any, anything to add, or Supervisor Daniels, who, who was on the committee, but that's, that's what I've got for right now.
I don't really have anything to add, other than the one gentleman earlier mentioned that, that I had said that this has been talked about for ten years. I think it's been talked about since Rockbridge.
talked about for ten years. I think it's been talked about since Rockbridge County High School was built. Um, there is a huge need, um, for schools, for community, uh, for gym space. We've got our kids traveling all over the county just to have basketball practice and volleyball practice and whatever else we're trying to do, not to mention what Raro is doing. Um, so from my perspective, I'm, it, it's a huge need for, for the community and the county and the schools. Um, happy to answer any questions you all might have otherwise.
Any question?
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you.
If I may, as a member, I've sat on a committee, uh, just to address some of the concerns that came up tonight. Um, you know, this project doesn't just benefit the high school, it benefits, uh, youth and adults throughout our community. Um, there was the question about security. Uh, we did have the resource officer at the high school involved in all those meetings. Uh, security was talked about, uh, continuously, especially with it being a joint venture type project. And how do you separate the students and, and the community? And that was laid out in the design. So i- it's there to keep them separated and, uh, to keep them safe. And, uh, that was always a point of emphasis during those discussions. Uh, not only does it benefit the, uh, athletics and, and the adults in our community, giving them a place to, to, uh, be able to exercise and, and use. Uh, I firmly believe that it enhances the economic development opportunities for our county. I've been able to host tournaments, being able to bring people into our community, have them eat, sleep, buy things here in our community. Uh, I, I think that would help. Um, of all the people, and I appreciate the comments that were made tonight, I respect the individuals who, who made them. Uh, you know, since this has been talked about the last couple of months, uh, I would say ninety-nine percent of the people have been very positive about this. And as Dr. Thompson said, a lot of them have said it's well overdue, it should have been done many, many years ago. Uh, one of the questions that came up or was discussed earlier was the lighting and the traffic along Greenhouse Road. Uh, I do believe that, you know, and I, I vow to, you know, we need to work with VDOT to improve the lighting along that road. Um, that, that needs to be good done regardless of, of the center. Uh, but then also the crossing there to, uh, work with VDOT to, uh, have what is uh, flashing, you know, flashing light or, or, or something there, more light there. Uh, again, that needs to be done regardless. We still have students crossing the street as it is right now, you know, so. Um, so those are things that, that we will continue to work on and improve with this. Uh, and it does, uh, you know, it is increasing debt service, but at the same time, it is taking nearly ten million dollars off CIP. And those figures roll, you know, so, um, I, I, I believe in this project. I support this project and I want to make a motion to pursue the project to direct the staff to engage with Davenport on option two of the financing and authorize the school division to secure detailed design services for the proposed athletic center and begin in the process of securing a contractor for the turf field and to add the, the million and a half to FY twenty-seven CIP tennis courts to continue seek options for that.
Thank you. Um. Are there any other comments? Questions from this board?
It's bothered and concerned me for a long time. That our largest elementary school in the school system does not and has not had a gymnasium. And I don't know how many years since the school has been there. I know I've been aware for thirty years when we were going in with our classes, that we'd have to have a gym and, uh, or have the classes in the lunchroom. Uh, that concerns me. Another thing that concerns me is, uh, I still think we're losing parking spots and spaces in doing so. We're giving up our tennis court, something that we had. Um, that concerns me. And we're dealing with a problem that's been created and brought onto us by, I guess, previous boards. And that when we decide we need land to build something, we buy only enough land to set the building that we want to build there. We never think about future expansion and, and where we're going to do it. Um, I know there's some property that was for sale or is for sale in the county that I discussed with one of the supervisors and I said, well, that might be also a future site for a, a school, you know, thirty, forty years down the road. I'm I don't, I don't know. I'm, I have some concerns about putting all this. Another concern I have is sharing a facility. And my, it's, way I explain it is my tinker shop in my backyard and I let my neighbor come in there and use it. And he says, oh, by the way, you can't use it tomorrow because I've got to have it. I realize it's a facility is split. But, um, I'm, I'm not crazy about the idea of Raro having a gymnasium on our school property. I will need to look at another place to locate that.
Just some comments. If, if you've been around long enough, you realize, and we tend to forget what has happened in the past, when the high school was built, the design was built, everything was placed in that was needed. And then with the wisdom of the board of supervisors, they said, no, you can only spend thirteen point two million dollars. And since, since that point, we've been, we've probably spent thirteen million dollars putting back the things into the high school that were originally supposed to be there, but were cut because we drew a line in the sand. Uh, when we, we talk about security, nothing can be a hundred percent secure. But that gone of a high school kid can't cross a two-lane road twice a day that they're doing now to get to their cars and then we've got a bigger problem with what we're doing in education if we can't get our kids across the street and look both ways when they're fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. But we're not a big metropolitan area and I know there's always dangers. But when you design a building that has a solid wall and steel doors separating it from another part of the building that would be used by probably the senior citizens of the county during the time of school, I think there's pretty safe people to have around. Some say you, you shouldn't build something unless you can pay for it. Well, why should I be paying now to put money away where I'll be dead before it's ever built? So if, you should be contributing to things that you should be able to use. We could take money out of reserves and pay cash for it right now. And then people would say, oh my God, you're taking your reserves away. We are financially sound. We've always gotten good ratings by the people that rate us. We're not foolish with our funds. And I would second the motion made by Mr. McDaniel that we fully fund the project that he recommended.
Is there any other comments? Before we move on to vote? If not? Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Day?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Okay. Um, we will move on to I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Um. We will move on to the public hearing. Sorry, folks, we went ten minutes over, so we will move past the community service, uh, the appointments and move on to the public hearings. And we'll start with the public hearing on South River Lee's pri- um, property. Mr. Dryden?
Uh, this matter was brought up to the board before to set this public hearing, so there's not been any change, but the, to remind you of what it's about. Uh, you all are aware that we own, uh, a certain amount of property, uh, that's a flood mitigation property resulting from floods that happened several years ago there. Under the agreement for the grant which we received, we purpose purchased that property and we are required to offer it for lease back to the owners or the subsequent purchasers of those properties. Uh, we now have before the board today a lease for the herrings which have three of those lots there. Their lease will expire at the end of this month. Uh, they've agreed that they would like to, they've indicated they would like to continue that lease. And so that lease is now before the board for renewal. And by, by state law, we are required to have a public hearing anytime we lease, uh, property owned by the county. That's why we have a public hearing today.
Okay, thank you. Um, then I will, um, open the public hearing. Anybody online? Can somebody tell me?
Just, just a second, let me check.
Thank you, Senator.
No one with a hand raised.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Not, I will close the public hearing. Any board discussion?
Move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And I vote yes. We will move back to our appointments. Uh, Ms. Kendall's term on the Rockbridge area Community Service Board is set to expire December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Ms. Kendall has expressed an interest in continuing to serve and there are no applications for consideration at this time. Is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Kendall to the Community Service Board? Right, is there a second?
Second.
Um. Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Um, the board is aware of another term set to expire December thirty-first. Ms. McKissick's term expires at the end of the year and if she is unable to, um, continue serving, the board is seeking applicants to serve on the Community Service Board. Uh, applications on the county's website under boards and committees and there should be turned, and those should be turned into the administrator's office. And we would appreciate that very much if you were interested in that. Um, just a note to all those who take the time, uh, to serve on various boards, committees and commissions and authori- authorities. The board really appreciates your efforts and your time serving at the community and please, anyone interested, come talk to us. We would, um, like to get you involved. And we'll move on to the TCO, Phil, unexpired term for Jason Harris. That term expires seven, eight, twenty-twenty-nine. This seat on the TCO is currently vacant. The board is seeking applicants willing to serve on that as well. Moving on to the monthly staff reports.
I'm making a motion to accept the reports.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Second.
Okay, Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And also, uh, board comments. Is there any comments or committee updates? Um, anybody would like to? Is there a joint meeting Thursday? Yes, we have a joint meeting Thursday, I believe that's at five o'clock with, uh, five o'clock. And is that, does anybody know where that is located?
It's at the Innovation Center.
Thank you very much. We also have the, we also have a veterans parade that begins at ten thirty tomorrow. Um, that begins, I think, Oak Grove, is that correct, Spencer? Oak Grove Cemetery and will end at our new veterans memorial.
That's correct.
All right.
With a ceremony at the memorial.
Okay. Any other maybe reports?
I would just offer briefly, briefly that I, Ms. Ayers and Ms. Suter attended the Virginia Association of Counties Annual Conference uh, this past weekend and, uh, without getting into details, uh, we have many of the same challenges that other communities have. So it's, um, I, it, it, it's, it's tough to hear, but it's, it's good to be there and listen to how other communities or other jurisdictions municipalities are, are handling, handling these challenges. It, it's, it's a positive thing I find every time I go.
Thank you for attending. All right, uh, if there's no one, no other unfinished business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel? Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
Night. Chief.
How you doing, sir?
Yeah.